Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Tuxbury zoning board of appeals today, 2022. And first on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes from December 16, 2021.
Move them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, let's start with the new hearings. Voting on this one is Mike, myself and Dan. Because we voted on this the last time, so I figured we'd keep it same. All right, we're going to start with Francesca Land LLC for a variance from section 4130, appendix B, for year-round setback and special permit under section 3651 to increase the existing non-conforming structure of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to construct a 6,950 square foot addition to the existing as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located 913 East Street, assessors map 102, lot 52, zoned heavy industrial.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Dick Cuco from Woodland Design. And you're right, Madam Chair, that you've seen this twice before.
Yeah.
We have an existing concrete block building that's at 913 East Street. And the which is this?
You all have a picture of it.
That one right there. And what we're proposing to do is put on the expansion of in this location. And we're seeking the variance for the setback and a special permit because we're expanding a non-conforming use. And as I explained in the previous application, but for those who are watching at home and to refresh your memory, the property is uniquely hampered by the fact that we have a power line that runs through most of the property. We have a railroad in the rear and another, the railroad crossing over here. So at the time, we had gotten the variance from this board and the special permit. And because of COVID, we were under the Webex meeting thing. And between going back and forth, it took well over a year to get approval between planning and conservation. Then we saw one of the owners of the property, Mrs. Germano, passed away. So that put everything into kind of another holding pattern. And they finally got a contractor in and he brought his plans to the building department and missed it by two days. So because the period had told, we couldn't come to you for an extension. Had we known that the week before, we would have come for an extension. But unfortunately, it's kind of crazy times we're living in. And so we're here again to ask you to grant us the same relief that was granted back in May of 2020. It's so if you want, I can go into the project in detail. If I don't know if you've read my memo. And if that's sufficient, I won't waste a lot of your time.
Um, I
We do have all our other permits planned
Right.
contemplation, ready to go.
Everything was approved?
Everything's approved.
The initial application, was it still for 4130 and 3651?
Yes, correct.
Is it the exact same?
Yes.
Everything's the same.
I have no
I don't have any Is there anything else you want to?
No, unless you want me to go into detail.
No, thank you. We've heard it a couple of times.
You've been very patient.
No, thank you for bringing it back. Um, okay. Somebody want to make a motion? Well, I'll open it up to the public if anyone to add.
We don't have anybody on the phone anymore, right?
No. Make a motion?
Well, I'll move to close the public.
You'll have to read it?
On public part.
Okay.
Were you going to close the public part of the hearing? So motion to close?
Both parts of the hearing?
Second.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
And I'll make a motion to approve Francesca Land LLC for a variance from section 40. We believe we have to do this in two parts.
Two parts, that's correct. Start with the special variance first and then
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Francesca Land LLC for a special permit under 3651 to increase an existing non-conforming structure of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to construct a 6,950 square foot addition to the existing concrete block garage with this board. Said property is located 913 East Street, assessors map 102, lot 52, zoned heavy industrial.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. You're all set?
Nope. Finish the other one?
Oh, that's right. I'd like to make a motion to approve a Francesca Land LLC for a variance from section 4130 of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to construct a 6,950 square foot addition to the existing concrete block garage as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 913 East Street, assessors map 102, lot 52, zoned heavy industrial.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your patience.
No, no, thank you very much.
Good to see you again.
Great seeing you. Have a good weekend. Next on the list is RCJ Properties LLC for a special permit under section 3231 of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to allow storage of more than one unregistered vehicle on the property as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 2532 Main Street, assessors map 94, lot 66, zoned commercial.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us.
Name and address, please.
I am Carlos Sagasumi, represent RCJ Properties LLC.
My name is Claudio Sina. I'll be the future tenant for Mr. RJC Properties here.
An address, please.
Personal address or business address, ma'am?
Personal, please.
Avenue 4, Lower Wellwood Drive in Carlisle, Mass.
47 Red Spring Road, Marlborough.
Thank you. Okay, can you talk to me about what you're doing, please?
Yes, like we stated on the application, the current building is for the repair of motor vehicles. What we were asking for was an extension of the provisions of section 3231 to allow unregistered vehicles as well as currently, right now, it's allowed for registered vehicles. After speaking with Mark, the building commissioner, he had mentioned that this might be a
Could you speak until the microphone?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
This might be a possibility of us being able to get that provision for unregistered vehicles, given the fact that the current, the tenant moving in has a current dealer's license in the town of Tuxbury.
Correct. So just to clarify a little bit of the purpose of what the property will be used for, just so you have an idea. I know we have stated everything in the letter, but sometimes somebody just saying it, it's better. So as I said, my name is Claudio Sina. We currently own and operate dealerships at different locations. We have a review location. We also have a Tuxbury location and currently an expansion. Dealerships that we have and that we currently operate, obviously, the sales that we generate, we need extra services to be provided mechanically and so on and so forth. So the whole idealization of the project that Mr. Carlos Properties is to be able to turn over our get those cars ready in order for them to be sold at the dealerships that we currently own. So de-location in itself will not sell any vehicles because we own the dealership, which is actually just a couple of blocks down the road. But operationally, it's a great tool for us being able just to be so close and have the cars there, they maintain, they brought back the dealership. And now they're ready to be sold and delivered to the customers, which unfortunately now with COVID, there's so many other hardships that happen in financing and the registry taking slightly longer. So we really need to make sure that we're on top of our internal operation efficiencies in order to sort of cover all of those gaps. And obviously, if we don't deliver the car, there's no business. So Carlos, Carlos facility, not only because of location, because we currently own the dealership in Tuxbury, but also because of the facility itself. So we're talking about six bays and is for us to be able to do all of that within the property.
Chair, is this a first sentence or is there a building inspector in?
It's the first time we've had this conference.
You're not here as a result of denial?
Yeah, you were denied by the building, right? Building inspector?
Well, we haven't
He didn't oppose to it. But in other words, in order for us to get it, we'll be able, we'll need to come to you guys and ask for it.
You never sent a letter of denial, though, or you've never?
No, we've never received any letter, just a letter of recommendation or him saying we're not opposed to it.
I see.
He says in there that he's not opposed to it, but obviously, we have to go through the right channels. And again, we don't want to start anything and do anything wrong. We want to be sure we're getting in there. Be no trouble with you guys. So just really wanted everything done from scratch, the way it should be.
Do you guys have a copy of that letter from?
I do.
Mark?
Yeah, we do.
As well as Steve?
We do, yeah.
Also, just for clarification, I'm not sure if you guys ever have come across our dealerships. It's called Sina Motors. All of our cars are pretty much new. We work with the newer, the better, the lowest mileage possible best, so that we have, again, the least amount of headaches when we're selling them over to customers. So just so you know, the type of product that potentially would be there being maintained. So 2017, 2021, 2016 vehicles, 30, 50,000 miles would be the type of vehicles that you're looking at. No scrap, no missing that would damage in any way, no trailers, no like gigantic trucks or anything of the sort that would potentially, you know, for the neighbors and everything.
You're not sure, huh?
Correct.
Right, right. How many cars are you looking at roughly?
How many cars for?
That will be sitting there unlicensed and
So because we own the Tuxbury location and the Tuxbury location is very big, so it can fit a lot of cars there. Are really just the cars that are being maintained in between the locations. So my guess is would be around 20 to 30 cars. But it can be arranged in a way that perhaps if you want to set the specific limit, we can come to an agreement.
Are you near another dealership, I think?
We're actually right next to a dealership.
Another smaller?
A different product, but
To the right of you, right? And then to the left, there's like
If you're looking at the dealerships, it's on the right, yes. And we're in the left.
And then on the left of that is like a building that was a pellet stove or stove.
So the gas station's on the left and then he's on the right, yes.
Because I'm just more concerned of the overflow of where, how close other cars will be to other people and just the whole dynamic of it.
But this is a different location.
Oh, it's at a different location?
Yes, so
So how many cars are going to be at that location? And what's near that one? I don't know where that one is.
So the location where Carlos facility is, is a couple of blocks down, very far.
Past the fire department?
Correct. After the fire department, after the traffic lights, and then it's on the left. So very separate, completely different location.
I may, is it across the street from you are?
No.
Next to Heritage Plumbing.
Oh, okay, okay.
So much farther down. So there wouldn't be potential crossovers there.
Just to clear me up here, you have a dealership facility?
Mm-hmm.
Already in Tuxbury?
Yes, sir.
And you want to have the overflow at another?
Location.
Of repairs, yes.
And that's down the, down the street?
Pretty much, sir.
Are you going to get them back and forth?
We have dealer plates and repair plates for that, yes. So the question is really if we can store them there for a temporary amount of time until they're waiting in flow for being repaired and then brought back to the dealer to be sold. They won't even stay there like for long periods of time. So in other words, correct, yes.
For an overflow?
Yes, sir.
Right, and what's, and how often? Over, I'm just thinking of traffic and pattern and what that's going to look like for your neighbors and
So I think you probably have a floor plan in there. You'll see that the Carlos location is actually quite extensive in how the building is outside. There's plenty of space for, you know, cars to come in and to park. The space, I don't think it's a question, it's really just a matter of the permit in itself.
Originally, that one-story concrete block building that's shown on the plans, that was used for like a Midas or a Correct. It used to be a Midas at one point. So there were people pulling in? Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, had traffic and coming in and out with repairs that way. And up front, it shows the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lots. The cars will be more in the back?
Correct.
That is correct.
That is correct.
They're going to be stored as we had agreed upon in the back part.
Okay.
You're the owner of the location that the cars are going to be stored at?
I, I am the owner of the dealership and also now owner of, or the future owner of the repair facility that he owns the property for.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
You're going to own both eventually?
Yes.
He owns the one, the overflow lot right now?
Yes.
And he's going to sell that to you?
I'll not buy it, I'll lease it. So I'll lease the property, but my business will be in there.
So he's the owner?
Correct.
And neither one of you have a class 1, 2 or 3 license in accordance with MGL?
You mean dealership license?
Yes.
I do, yes.
You do have that?
Yes.
Correct.
Two, actually.
And in Tuxbury?
Tuxbury one, sir. Yes.
I believe that's one is on the
The owner doesn't, but the person leasing does.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the difference.
Because he's the owner.
Right. And that's why they had to come. Because the person who owns doesn't have the licenses, the leasing that does. It's coming slow.
It's okay. It's just for us, for the whole transaction to work, for there to be business there, for there to be business interest for us, we need the special permit because if we can't repair our cars, I mean, yes, as it states on the letter, we'll have customers that might come in and repair a thing or another, but the bulk of the business in itself, or the core of its money, it's the pressure that I take off my current business that then saves me money and the for making that happening. So
Right.
Not having, not having this permit means we wouldn't be able to pursue it and also, you know, generate business.
Is there anything else you want to say to the board or bring up? Or anything else you want to say on this?
No, I think everything
Yeah.
was written on the, on the permit in regards to some of the stuff that we were also wanting to do in order to keep the location side appeal or looking good from the street aspect of it.
Hello, you guys have been there recently, but it actually looks really good. Carlos is doing a good job lately.
Thank you. Yeah, there was, there was
It looks really nice, yeah.
Previous from after, after I purchased, I realized the amount of previous owner had had with the town and hence why Mark had kind of put his hands out and said, hey, we need to slow down with what you're doing right now. This, the process you need to go. And it's because it was an extensive six, seven years of going back and forth in courts with the previous owner
Right.
who is no longer around. The place looked like a junkyard. I think I took 84 vehicles out of there that looked like, it looked like a junkyard. So it's been a lot of work on my end to get in the building to look what it is right now. That's not where I plan on stopping. I can continue to renovate the building and the outside of it. I want it to look nice, presentable, you know, so.
It does look really nice.
Okay, it being a public hearing, I'd like to open it up to the public. Yep, please name and address, please.
Good evening, John Barrowby, 2543 Main Street. I'm right across the street. I want to start by saying place looks great. You've done a good job.
Thank you.
You just touched on how bad it was before. That's my concern. I mean, the use of the property is already permitted for automotive repair. Basically, the only question I see is how many vehicles are going to be there? Because you're only allowed one unregistered vehicle. So my concern is a number on how many and hours of operation. Those are my concerns.
So I totally understand your concerns from the perspective of how it looked before.
You need to address the board?
Oh, I am sorry. I thought I was going to address him. I totally understand his concerns in terms based on how Carlos said, there was a junkyard in there, basically. So lots of old cars, scrap metals and everything. I'd actually like to invite you to come over to our dealerships if you like.
Still need to address the board?
I'm sorry, it feels like I'm answering the question.
I understand, I understand.
I'd like to invite him to come over to our dealerships to see the type of vehicles that we sell. And you'd feel a lot more comfortable as to, you know, what you would be seeing on a general basis. We're right, I'm sorry again, right on the, you know, just on the road from where you are right now. And I think that should answer a lot of his questions in regards to that of how it will look. And it's not going to be just a junkyard and how we take care of things as well. And I think we've mentioned about the numbers, so I'm not sure if
I don't think we've come up with an exact number yet.
Okay.
And, and I, we also do not have an hours of operation listed. So that's something else we should, we could look at.
So our
If I can interrupt, I believe one of the things that you had mentioned with Mark was the possibility of putting up a fence in the back part two of the building so that it would not, the amount of vehicles that are stored back there, which would easily fit about 30 to 40 vehicles in the back part of the building, that it would not, you know, be a sore for, for anyone. This gentleman's property, if I'm correct, is the one that's right across between my, my property as well as Heritage, is that correct?
Yeah.
I believe actually when I purchased, I came over and knocked on your door. And I might have, I believe I knocked on his door and gave him my phone number because he has a very beautiful, very well-kept property. It's very, it stands out in the neighborhood. So and my property at the time did not look anything like
Right.
its property or perhaps my, my other neighbors. So once again, that's something that I'm very keen on having it look presentable, not something that I just spent a lot of money so that it can go down the toilet, you know? I think that's something that Mr. Claudio and I have spoken about several times about me personally, outside of the board and outside of what he wants to do. This is my property. I've spent a lot of money to get it to where it is right now. And I'd like to keep it that way, you know? I don't want to make it look like a junkyard again.
What hours of operation is, will it be?
So our dealership operations today is 9 till 7 on Monday to Friday. And we operate on Saturdays again from 10 till 7 on Saturdays.
So you, you plan to keep that operational at the same time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You may.
If, are you going to be bringing customers down there? Are those cars just going to be, are you going to show?
So for customers, it would be different probably because just
I may, are you going to bring customers physically down there? Or are you going to bring the cars up to the customers?
Okay, so I'd like you to think the business has sort of two segments. One segment is the largest bulk of where the funds will be done, which is the unregistered vehicles. Those are where, let's say, I go into the auction today and I purchased 10 vehicles, 20 vehicles. They're all unregistered, they're not sold to consumers yet. So they come in, they go into the dealership, and now they go into a chain of operations where their brakes are changed. And so then they get ready for the customer to buy the car and then drive away. That's one segment. The other segment would be obviously when you sell a customer a car in the future, if he ever wants to change his brakes and come back to change the brakes with me, then it'll be like a service. We'll provide both of those services at that location and also at the dealership that we have because we have licenses and we can do that there. So the bulk of how they come back and where they go was sort of a bit divided depending on how much we have. But I don't have a number for you because it's not something that I focus on today. Our biggest concern and expansion idea, idealization is we need to get the cars that we already sold out. And like I said, unfortunately with COVID, it's made it very difficult for us to get them out because there's no flow anymore of cars like it used to. There isn't as much cars as it used to. And so when they come in, the type of cars that we get unfortunately are not as much of a good quality as they used to, which means sometimes you have to do more work on them along with the registry difficulties in the financing. So again, yeah.
What our concern is, because it's starting to sound like there's going to be a lot of traffic flow coming in and out of that location. So it sounds to me that it's going to be constant turnover of cars coming in and out. Correct?
It actually depends on what your, what your opinion is as to how many cars I can store at the back. As Carlos said, you can fit 30 to 40 cars, right? So if you'll allow me to store those cars there, there won't be much of an inflow because they'll already be there to be done. You know, gradually, it won't be as much. The less of a allowed amount that I can have in there, then yes, perhaps you'll have more turnover. Having said that, the whole route is quite busy.
Understood, and that's what we're trying to make sure it doesn't get even busier.
Okay.
So because that's, that's an issue.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Sure.
So it's sounding like you're going to be selling cars from that location?
No.
As well? You're not going to be selling?
No, sir.
Customers are not going to be going into that location, looking at cars?
Not to purchase cars. But let's say yourself, you have your car, right?
Yeah.
So if you want to change your brakes, you can come in and I'll service your car. But servicing your car does not mean selling cars there.
Correct, but you'll be servicing at that location?
Yes.
Just servicing, not selling?
Yes, sir.
And these will be registered vehicles?
Correct.
And those at that
The ones that I service.
Because it's already registered?
Oh, I apologize if I said anything that led you to believe anything different.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
At that point, if they're coming in for service?
Correct.
The car will be registered.
Yes.
So that's, that's a
And I intend those at the front, as Carlos said, and we can keep the unregistered ones at the back.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's the unregistered ones that we'd have to really focus on?
Correct.
Not the registered?
There's a lot of moving parts, so I'm just
Yeah, it's okay, I apologize.
Trying to get them all over.
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, no, it's fine.
That, that second facility is going to be a repair facility and you're going to use it also for storage of overflow for the cars that you're selling?
Unregistered overflow of cars.
And that's it?
Yeah.
And I guess that's where we're looking for a number, right?
That's what we're looking for.
We will have to come up with a magic number.
Okay.
I've heard different numbers. I've heard 20 once, I heard 30 once, and I heard 40 once.
Right.
Well, what, what the can support is different perhaps than what your opinion of how many I should have there. So I guess we can go in between what perhaps you're intended is and what the facility can store. I, like I said
Remember, this is just the stored number of unregistered.
Yeah.
Not what you may have coming in registered for service. So you still need to leave way, leeway for those cars to be parked and have room as well. We don't want it to get out of control.
Sure.
If you're repairing 10 cars, those 10 cars are going to be parked on that lot as well as the unregistered cars that are parked on that lot?
So for, as an example, we have the six bays, right? So if I have 10 cars to repair, six will already be inside the bays. They won't be outside.
Yeah, four will be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just as an example.
Right, I'm just trying to make it make sense for all of us.
Sure.
I like the idea of the fence. I was going to bring that up. That would be great if you could put it on the back line of the, of the building.
Address the board, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. And, and maybe put a gate down there so that the gates can be closed on the weekends and it's got good appearance.
Right.
That'd be great. As far as the number of vehicles, now I, I think I understand the concept of what they're trying to do. The general public can come in and get service.
Yes.
Also, he is going to have his cars basically delivered or whatever to his dealership. And he's going to shuttle them down, get them dressed up and bring them back to be sold at the other location across from Maverick's next to Halfness.
That's what it sounds like.
That's where he is, right?
Exactly, yes.
As far as the number of vehicles, I think what should be done, to be fair, is determine how many slots, as they have out front, size-wise, that would fit in there comfortably. Because if you, if you put the cars, if you look at the plot plan, if you put the cars basically along the shaded area so that you can pull in, I don't know how many you would fit there. But if you were to pull in and park them to the right and park them to the left and leave the middle open, that would allow a fire truck or emergency vehicle or something to get in there. Because if you just open the gate and pack all the vehicles in there, it'll be chaos. So that may be how you can come up with a nice, comfortable number of spaces. I don't think that would be a problem from him because if he fixes five of them, you can bring them down the street, bring five more in, very close by. Seems reasonable to me.
Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, that's it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they want to address? No? No? Do you guys want to discuss? I think we need to discuss.
I have a, I don't know what, I put three, three to be various, various here, but what I'm taking of it is that he has said at one point that we're going to just store cars there. Then at the next point, it's, it's been talked about taking cars, bringing them down, fixing them, and then bringing them back. So why do we need to store cars there if they're not going to be kept there? If they're only going to be in and out, in and out, in and out?
No, they'll be, they'll be stored there.
They'll be stored there as well. They're going to be delivered there. From what I understand, he's buying them from auction. From auction, they're going to be delivered there.
Right.
So they can be looked over, cleaned up, done whatever, everything done there and then shipped over to the dealership.
Right.
Driven or.
Fixed, dressed up, cleaned.
Which is, I'm coming to, I get into that and that, I'm saying, so there will be no cars, they have, the same time will be there for a month at a time. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'm not sure if, how long they'll be sitting there. So we just need to come up with the numbers, how many cars can sit in the back of the building where there are one store cars. Not in the front. And the front will be for the everyday business. The back will be the cars that need to be cleaned up and sent out.
Is that how you're understanding it?
Yeah, the only variation to what you said is that the cars actually get delivered generally to the actual dealership.
Okay.
Just because it's there for the type of trucks that come in and so on.
Okay. So there'll be no big trucks or anything going in and out of there?
We have our own truck that carries three cars.
Right.
And sometimes it helps. And I think it helps your traffic too. But, so I guess you could say there's a mix of them, but it might not be high flux of them, trucks coming in there, basically. And answering, I think, a bit of your question, sir, it's not that I need my whole inventory there as well before they get sent over. But it's just enough so that we can keep the flux of the cars working. So in other words, at a Tewksbury location, we have a huge lot with lots of cars. In there, that's really where the whole storage of bulks and of unreg, of unregistered vehicles. The ones that will stay are just really the flow that I need for them to come in, be fixed, change brakes, and then go to the other location.
You have a, you have, you fix cars there too, though, don't you?
At my current location, yes, I do.
You do, right? How many cars can you currently work on there?
So in between, actually, both of my dealerships were around the 120 mark, 120.
I'm just talking the Tewksbury location? That you can fix, or that you'll have inside your bay?
Around fifty percent of that.
Okay.
Twenty, 130, about, obviously, high season, low season. Right now, that's not the reality, but yeah, it changes a little bit.
Sir, if you're going to address, you're going to say your name and address again, sorry.
Hi, John Barby, 2543 Main Street. Just another concern about the delivery of vehicles. I don't know how you're going to get a truck. I mean, I've seen, I think it's that before that they, that this truck he's talking about, there's three or four cars on it. It pulls over on the side of 38 and then unloads and whatnot. We really probably could pull it into his parking lot. I'd be concerned about that same truck coming down, trying to get in and out of that parking lot. Because I don't know how they could get in, turn around. I don't want to see the truck constantly backing in and out of the street. My concept of what he wanted to do was, everything was going to be delivered down the street and he's going to put his repair plate on and bring his vehicle down. If he brings three or four down, puts them down there and it takes them a week to get it and they're waiting for parts, I think that may be the storage part of it.
Yes.
So just to clarify, my own transportation truck, it's not big, okay? It doesn't carry all of those cars. But the ones that I, for example, bring from auction that I pay, that's not my state, New Jersey, California that come in, they tend to be bigger trucks, which is precisely why I say I prefer them coming to the dealer.
Right.
So that there's more space for all of them maneuvering and they can do that. So in that specific case, you won't see big trucks coming in of four, five, six cars, I don't know, what do you have in mind for that? So talking about if it happens, because yes, you are right, we will generally have the dealership plates coming back and forth. It's just in any given case, if I have, let's say, three cars right now that need to go. But if you really think about it, at the operational point, it's not even worth for me because it's two blocks down the road. So the time that I take to load the truck with three cars, unload them there and put them back sometimes, it's more. So, you know, it's just a matter of, so if you ever see a truck there one day, you're like, oh, you told me you wasn't going to do that. But, you know, once in a little moon, you might. So I just.
Thank you.
So if we could, if I could just suggest a couple of those things that I requested could be a condition, as far as the number of cars?
We'll take that into consideration.
Hours of operation?
Yes, we can take those into consideration.
And no deliveries?
Thank you.
If I may say something in means of the delivery, I didn't give him a point, any car can be towed into the facility. That's just a registered, a registered vehicle.
Right.
So I can add an unregistered.
But that's different. We're not talking registered.
Exactly.
This is completely, that's completely separate from non-registered.
Exactly.
So I'm not concerned about the registered vehicles. We're discussing non-registered.
Okay. And you're not, you're not parking on the side of 38 and driving?
Right. No, in the facility, if you, there is plenty of space for a, any truck.
Tow truck.
Of such size.
Right.
Or it, or a tow truck to be able to pull right in, all the way in without.
But addressing his concern as well, you're not going to have huge trucks coming in of that size and specimen that he's, he's taking off right now. I understand because they do park or they go into my dealership, but we're talking about like double trucks and large trucks, so different type of animal, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
It's okay.
So, board. This one is me, your wife, and Dan. So to discuss this, we need to, I think it's reasonable to set a number of how many cars he can have parked in.
I, I agree.
And I can honestly say I'm not comfortable in setting a number without looking at the location.
Not either. Site survey?
Site survey. I want to push this out till next month so we can go walk the site, look at it ourselves. This way we can have a better number. We don't want it to be too low or too high. We want to make it as fair as possible for everybody involved. So the only fair way for us to do it is actually going onsite to see the back, the sides, the whole thing. I don't want to upset anybody in this and I, I just want to make it as fair as possible. So somebody could make a motion?
I'll move to extend the.
Oh, wait, nope. First, wait, first, both parts of the hearing. Let's start there.
I'll move back.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, somebody want to make a motion to extend to next month?
I move to extend the, this request for the occupancy permit for unregistered vehicles to, under section 3231, to be extended to the.
With the owner's permission, of course.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
To the next date?
Site survey to next month's meeting of February 24th.
Next, site survey to the next meet, month's meeting of February 24th. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We do have your permission to go.
We have your permission to go.
Yes, please do.
All right, good. So we're going to walk it? We'll be there within the month. Anytime any one of us will drop by together. It'll be fair. We'll all have our own opinions. We do anyway. Mine's always right, theirs isn't. No. So, we're good. So, we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
No problem.
Thank you for your time.
We don't, we don't have a date for next month yet, do we?
Yes, the 24th.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It's usually the last Thursday of every month.
Thank you.
I remember. Thank you.
So, site survey, we're going to look for a number of vehicles, taking into consideration that is also repairing vehicles.
Correct, correct.
And that's the only thing we're going to look for?
Right, not to announce operation?
No, we, no, I'm, I think those are fine. Those are average hours.
I mean, the, the, the site is, is.
Is just strictly for how many cars he can have.
It's his own commercial, so I don't have any issues with what he's trying to do.
No, no, I don't either. I just want to make sure I don't underestimate the number of cars.
Okay.
It's a business. He's got to live too, we all do.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Because I, my first guess would be thirty. If he says thirty, forty, I would have said thirty.
I, I scaled it with the six on the side. It comes up to twenty-three.
You got twenty-three, huh? So, I was going to say thirty.
Yeah.
Because he said you're going to forty. So I'd rather go look, see the back, how wide it all is. We'll figure it out. It's the right way. All right. Okay, next meeting is Highland View Realty Trust for a variance under 4130, appendix B for, of the Tewksbury zoning law for side yard setbacks to construct a greenhouse as shown on plans filed with this board. Located at 60 Highland View Road, Assessor's Map 23 Zone, Lot 53, Zoned Heavy Industrial.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good thanks.
Did you put it with the?
The application?
Put it in, part of the app? Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, for the record, my name is Matt Hammer. I'm with Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, located at 10 George Street in Mole. We're here this evening to request a variance off of the side lot line. And what I wanted to do this evening, I tried to get the applicant on tonight's meeting virtually. Wasn't sure if that was available.
It's not.
Yeah. So what I like to do is, I want to put the folks who are going to be occupied in this building on, I'm going to put him on speakerphone. And I believe it'll be picked up by the microphone and they could just give you a broad outline of who they are, introduce themselves, and kind of give you an idea of what the building's going to be at while it's occupied. So is that okay if I do that?
Can you do that?
Do we, do we have a dial-in number?
Yeah, because it will be. I don't think they do.
So, I was number two, how to do this. So the best thing I've learned is if you really want on the speaker, have like your phone kind of near the mic. That's the best thing I can tell, say.
Okay, sure.
Jason Brennan told me anything about this. So I, this is kind of new for me.
Sure.
But yeah, so like that's the best thing, totally kind of near the mic. It'll be picked up by the audio and actually.
Yep, that's fine. Just let us know if you can hear it.
All right, so I'm going to.
Thank you.
So I'm going to put Tony Beams from the Zordi Corporation on the phone. He's the CEO of the company and he has a two-minute outline.
You'll have to make sure he gives us his info as well, name and address.
Sure, yep.
Tony Beams?
Yeah, hi, Tony. This is Matt. You're here for the Tewksbury Zoning Board of Appeals. And if you could introduce yourself with your full name and then just give your two-minute introduction to the group. Thank you.
Name and address.
Okay. Hi, my name's Donald Beams. I go by, I go by Tony, my, you know, abbreviation, my middle name. I'm the CEO of Zordi Incorporated. We are a Delaware company that is about a year old. Our objective is to develop technologies related to the, the production of produce in greenhouses. And a little more specifically, we aim to develop robotics and software technologies for initially strawberries and then later crops as well, to be determined. The company is, is around a year old. It essentially stems from the doctoral work of a woman named Gil Luli, who is now our founder and CEO. She was at Carnegie Mellon, or she was at MIT as an undergrad, and then went to Carnegie Mellon and began her work. Halfway through that, her advisor, Sid Trina Bossa, moved to Washington, University of Washington, and she moved with him to finish her work. Her work is in, very specifically, what is it? Sorry, recursive learning of robotics. It's a, it's a type of machine learning, which we employ in our technology. We are thirteen people strong today with the expectation of being around thirty people in a year. We are a remote company, so we were sort of born remote. Right now, we're represented in eight, eight U.S. states and we have one gentleman who actually oversees our site development, who is located in the Netherlands. We currently lease greenhouse space in Tennessee, which is near Memphis. We, we plan to do that through the remainder of 2022. And, you know, if all goes well, including this, you know, these hearings, we would like to complete construction of our first R.D. greenhouse. We call it, you know, our first owned facility, right around June. And we hope to be producing strawberries in August. And on the financing side, we closed what's in the venture capital world, known as our Series A, so it's our first significant round of funding. We completed that in October of 2021. And we plan to begin our Series B funding as soon as this, this facility launches. And we, we plan to close that by December 2020. Wrapping it up, our, our primary investor from the Series A round is Coastal Ventures, which is a very well-known name in the, in the early, early-stage space in venture capital. So we're lucky to have them. They're a prominent name. And yeah, we're, we're excited to come to Tewksbury particularly. And if it's valuable for me to kind of expand upon why, why that is, I'm happy to do so.
All right, great. Thank you, Tony. So, we're here this evening to request a variance off of the side lot line to six, for the property located at 60 Highland View Road. This is a, is a narrow width property. It's in a heavy industrial district. Shown here, colored in brown, is the footprint of the building. And in this district, the requirement is to have fifty feet from all sides of the, of the lot line. So what we're proposing is to request a variance off of the side at the end of this dead-end street, which is adjacent to a parking area for a business that's located directly adjacent to this property, respecting the setbacks to the nearby residences as well, so that we felt as though requesting a variance. The, as you're facing the building, the right side was the least intrusive to the neighboring properties. I can tell you also that the Zordi Corporation has gone and knocked on the doors of the residences to introduce themselves, let them know that we're here before multiple different boards for permitting. And just to extend, if they had any concerns, if they needed anything like a fence or any vegetation, we were going to be happy to provide those barriers to them if need be. We've, we've also have informally presented this project to the Tewksbury Planning Board. We made a formal submission for special permit to the planning board as well. And the proposal was favorably received, initially right now. I know it's informal by the planning board, but they were positive with the proposed project. We've also done a, an ID, what they call an IDR meeting, which is an interdepartmental review meeting with the municipal departments in the town. We've seen, received some comments from that IDR, just more specific to the fire department in terms of making sure we can, you know. fu- the fire department, uh, in terms of making sure we can, uh, you know, turn around a vehicle and everything, which we feel is that we're gonna be able to overcome that. And, um, like I said, we filed that submission today to the planning board, uh, and we'll also need to file with Consev- wetland on the other side of the street, that, uh, portion of the project's gonna be, uh, constructed within a hundred-foot buffer, uh, to that wetland. The reason why we need to make this building wider, uh, into the, into the setback is very specific. As you may or may not know, growing involves, uh, rows of plants, and gaining the extra width in the building really means a lot to this facility in terms of, uh, having that extra space to, uh, conduct their activities. The 11 feet essentially means an, an additional row of planting, so it really, uh, meant a lot to them to try to get this, um, additional 11 feet on the width of the building. Uh, this is not a greenhouse, it's a, it's a robotics greenhouse, this is going to be a, uh, essentially a research and development facility for a much builder, bigger facility, uh, later on that they'll be doing. Um, so they have a lot of internal space needed for the robotics portion of this facility in order to, um, have this be a successful facility. This facility is essentially, and have very few employees, um, we expect somewhere between, you know, six and eight, uh, employees over the, over the life of this facility. Uh, we've proposed eight, uh, parking spots along the, um, if you're facing the property to the left-hand side, if they did ever need any additional parking spaces, there's more than enough room, uh, on the facility to accommodate some additional- This facility is gonna be a low-intensity use, um, you know, um, this is not gonna be a facility that's gonna have a tremendous amount of vehicles going back and forth from this facility. Essentially, it's gonna be a pickup truck, or something slightly bigger than a pickup truck to transport the strawberries, uh, out of the facility and bring them to the, uh, end user. Again, this is at the end of a dead-end street, um, I think that matters in terms of, um, you know, the, uh, the use and the impact to the neighborhood. There's gonna be a low traffic, uh, in and out of this facility. This use for a heavy industrial, uh, use on this property, I think is a low-intensity use. There's gonna be very little activity here, um, it's essentially enclosed within the building. There's no, um, large, lar-, uh, you know, loud manufacturing noises that you might typically get in a, a heavy industrial building, um, you know, things that would be in line with the use of this property could be contractor bays, or, you know, many different uses, as you all know, that could go into the zone, and to have it as a, as a greenhouse, essentially, is gonna, uh, be quiet, and a quiet use for the neighborhood, so we felt as though that really mattered in terms of the, uh, bigger building. Um, and the bigger building won't mean more noise or more activity, is essentially what I'm saying.
It is zoned.
Yeah. Yeah.
The only issue is, you're supposed to have 50 feet on the side, and you're saying you have 39.
That's correct.
And that's what you're here for the variance for.
That's correct.
11 feet difference.
We're asking relief of 11 feet for that side setback.
How, how long do you feel that this, uh, facility's gonna last, like, what's your duration, your time, 10 years, 12 years?
So right now, there's a, um, there's a ground lease of, uh, five years with, um, with the option to extend that lease agreement every five years, so we, we, we expect to be here at least 10 to 15 years in order to get full, um, productivity out of this property. What's different about this property, uh, with other properties you might run into, is the Zordi Corporation is gonna be developing the entire property on a ground. So they're gonna be fully vested in their investment into this property, so it, um, makes sense for them to, you know, continue this lease as long as they can to recoup their capital expenses into the property, so. That answers your question.
Being a public here, and I'll open it up to the public, does anybody wanna add anything? Do you guys have anything you wanna ask?
No, I don't have anything. Just, I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the-
Sorry?
No, go ahead, what do you think?
No, no, he was gonna close.
Oh, okay.
If we have questions, let's talk about it.
No, I think it's a good fit for the area, so.
It used to be, was it Carnation Capital?
Yep.
Tewksbury used to be Carnation Capital.
Yeah, no, I, I did know that, yes, I, I get rid of that, and that was interesting to hear.
You guys have anything else?
I don't. So, the three voting is, uh, the three gentlemen on the board.
I have to close the-
No, get it, please. I make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, somebody wanna go ahead and make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Highland View Realty Trust for a variance under section 4130, appendix B, of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for side yard setbacks to construct a greenhouse as shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at 60 Highland View Road, assessors map 23, lot 53, zoned heavy industrial. I second you.
All in favor?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, everyone, I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, good luck.
Thank you, that sounds very interesting.
It does, it really does. It's exciting. Okay, uh, next on the agenda, do we have any old business? No, no new. Okay, somebody wanna make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned.